Good afternoon, colleagues. When we recessed, we had passed— Good afternoon, colleagues. When we recessed, we had passed motions to add four bills to the second reading file, which the clerks promptly uploaded to the online session drive. The clerk is also sharing the drive of bills and floor amendments with the media and the public via the legislature's public hearing notice email system. If anyone would like to be added to that system, please call—or please email MIS@guamlegislature.org. At the time prior to recess, the majority leader had indicated five additional bills that we were waiting for upload to the legislature's website by the Committee on Rules. Of those bills, the clerk indicates one is now uploaded to the legislature's website. Are there any motions? So we continue on motions. Are there any motions? Senator Duennias, you are recognized.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I'm just pulling up the bill this time. So I could read the title. Sorry, this is my floor amendment. Madam Speaker, can you move on to another senator, and I'll pull up the title here for Bill 11?
Is there any other motion?
Can I get a short recess then, just to be able to pull up the title?
We'll have the clerk assist. You need a title?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Madam Speaker, at this time, I move that we place Bill 11-36 on the session
Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 11-36COR, as amended by the prime sponsor. An act to amend section 19405b of Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to requiring legislative authorization to extend a declaration of state of public health emergency which shall be known as the Restoration of Separation of Powers Act.
Thank you, clerk.
On the motion to place Bill number 11-36COR on the second reading file, are there Any objections? Hearing or seeing no objections, motion carries. Bill 11 is placed on the second reading file. Are there any other motions? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
This is Massey. Madam Speaker, I move to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Bill 24-36.
Could you read the title of the bill? Bill number 24-36 was placed in the third reading file last week, and this is a motion now to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 24-36. If you could please read the title.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. It's an act—so it's sponsored by Senator James Moylan, co-sponsored by Mary Camacho Torres, Christopher Emduenius, and Frank F. Blas Jr. It's an act to amend sections 3105 of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 22 Guam Code annotated relative to redating the implementation of the second tier of public law, 35-38 from March 1, 2021 to March 1, 2022. And it's as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning.
All right, thank you. This is a non-debatable motion to reconsider, but Vice Speaker, do you have a point of order?
Yes, I do have a point of order. Madam Speaker, if I may, before we do the consideration, I had asked if we were still in motions, and I did have one that I wanted to proffer, so I don't know if that would take precedence. I did raise up my hand, so I just wanted to make sure that I would be recognized if—in the event that further action is going to be taken on that bill.
Sure, we will entertain the motion, and then I can recognize you, sure.
Thank you.
All right, so on the motion to place Bill number 24—no, sorry. On the motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 24-36COR, which action was to place it in third reading. So a vote on this would mean that it would be back on second reading. All in favor—I mean, is there any objection to the motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 24-36? Are there any objections? Please raise your hand if you have an objection. Okay, there are objections, so all in favor of the motion to reconsider, please raise And me. Motion carries. So Bill number 24-36 is also now back on second reading. Are there any other motions? Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
This is Massey. Madam Speaker, if I may, Madam Speaker, I understand that the committee report has been reviewed and submitted and uploaded. Bill number 1-36LS is introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlayi, and V. Anthony Ada, which is an act to temporarily waive payments of business license fees from October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2022, and to allow for a business license fee credit for businesses who paid their license fees prior to the enactment of this act, and to cite this as the Business Assistance Act of 2021. I can put it onto the session agenda. Madam Speaker, I just got word that it is uploaded and has been submitted since February 12, and that the Committee on Rules has acknowledged its filing and uploading. Madam Speaker, if I can take a moment's recess—
Yes, one minute recess, please. We're back from recess. Vice Speaker Barnes, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to go ahead at this time and withdraw that motion at this time, as there was misunderstanding, and I'll go ahead and wait until the bill is actually uploaded. It's being reviewed right now, and I extend my apologies. So on the motion to withdraw, Madam—
All right, thank you, Vice Speaker. Are there any other motions? If not, then we are on the second reading folder, beginning with Bill number 39-36. If I could ask the Vice Speaker to please replace me.
Speaker Terese Terlayi, you are recognized on Bill number 39-36COR. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved to place Bill number 39-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. It's titled "An Act to Amend Sections 61303A, 61620, 61634, and 61645 of Chapter 61, and to amend Sections 66208, 66212A, 66303, 66307, 66406, and 66407 of Chapter 66," all of Title 21 Guam Code annotated relative to enforcing the terms and conditions of conditional use permits, variances, and zone changes into the third reading file, and would like to speak on the bill.
Senator—Vice Speaker Terlayi, you may proceed.
Thank you. For my colleagues' convenience, Bill number 39-36 was amended by the committee to incorporate stylistic suggestions of the Guam Legislature's legal bureau and some of the feedback provided at the public hearing. So Bill number 39-36 seeks to strengthen enforcement of the terms and conditions and covenants of conditional use permits, variances, and zone changes imposed upon projects by the Guam Land Use Commission. As most of you are aware, the Guam Land Use Commission is authorized to approve zone changes, variance applications, and conditional use applications which allow waiver of restrictions or allow additional uses of property in a particular zone. Often, the Guam Land Use Commission imposes terms upon their approval to address the concerns that were brought up in the public hearings or through the regulatory agency review process. Because these conditions are difficult to enforce after the project has been completed, in fact, at any time after it's left the Guam Land Use Commission, it becomes kind of out of the Land Use Commission's hands to enforce. This measure would amend the law to increase the opportunity to enforce these conditions at additional stages of the proposed projects. At the approval process, of course, in front of the Guam Land Use Commission, where the terms are set; during the building permit phase; at the certificate of occupancy phase; and at the approval of the business licenses in relation to that property. Both the Department of Land Management and Mr. John Duennias, who is president of Duennias, Camacho, and Associates, testified at the hearing that cases do exist where a developer has not followed through on conditions imposed upon them by GLUC. Department of Land Management does not currently have a list of projects that fall into this category, but they testify that they—that there are also projects that are not in compliance with the GLUC conditions. There are cases that, despite media and community outcry, the status of compliance is still unknown, as testified by Safe Southern Guam. And in other instances, it also took media and community outcry and several years to rectify infrastructure problems for all the businesses and residents in the village of Mangila, as discussed by one of my colleagues from Chalampago during the public hearing. In addition, the Department of Land Management supports mandating transmittal of the terms and conditions set by the GLUC to the building official, who is the director of Department of Public Works, which would facilitate enforcement through the Department of Public Works. And this is set forth in Section 5 of the bill. This bill would ensure the conditions placed on projects are tracked by both Land Management and DPW, and made available to all the regulatory and permitting agencies. In doing research for this legislation, I found it difficult to track the conditions of several projects, let alone monitor if these conditions have been met years later. The committee was able to confirm with the director of Land Management that he does sign off on building permits and occupancy permissions—permits and licenses. And during the building permit phase, currently, Department of Land Management is only reviewing if the project is properly zoned. However, this bill would mandate DLM to also review if GLUC terms have been complied with. It was clarified during the public hearing that planned development district and hotel zones and limited commercial zones can also have conditions attached. This bill could close these potential gaps in the ability to ensure projects are compliant by creating opportunities at the multiple levels to catch these violations and work with the project managers to rectify the issues before it's too late. And although regulatory agencies are involved in the application review process, the responsibility of enforcement of terms and conditions imposed by the Guam Land Use Commission has not been clear. What is clear is that the Department of Land Management Director serves as the secretary to the Guam Land Use Commission. He also has access to the terms on approval and all the land records, and is best suited for the role of enforcement of these covenants. Of course, this is in conjunction with the Department of Public Works, who has extensive authority under their building permits, you know, authority and inspection authority. So this bill seeks to give more authority to DLM, Department of Land Management, to enforce these requirements, which have been imposed by Guam Land Use Commission to protect our communities, residents, and businesses in our villages, to keep them safe. So I want to thank the Department of Land Management and the GLUC and the—and the agency—the Application Review Committee agencies, who participated in the ongoing critical dialogue needed to fix some of the systemic issues that have been happening for decades. And I ask my colleagues to support the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
This is Massey. Speaker Terese Terlayi, on the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Senator Joanne Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly do support the passage of Bill 39-36. I think in the course of the public hearing process, I think we found out very clearly that—in all these many years that the Guam Land Use Commission has been meeting to deal with projects that might require variance or zone changes to accommodate the construction of a project, the director did admit to us in the course of the hearing—which is something I've always suspected over the years—is that there's no one in the government that is tracking or ensuring that conditions set by the Land Use Commission are being enforced. And this is over the period of many decades. Certainly, as one of the—as a private resident and one of the founding members of Safe Southern Guam, we were very familiar with the Pago Bay project a few years ago, when a developer had bought off a certain portion of property that's closest to the Pago River, from the original Mother project that was built back in the late 19—what, 2000, 2009, I believe, with 2008, when they started excavating the property below the cliff line there overlooking Pago Bay on the Jonia side. There were conditions set for that project. Of course, right now, you see some residential homes that are constructed in the area, but at the time, conditions were set for the clearing of that property. One of them was the reinterment of ancestral remains. And to this day, Madam Speaker, we do not know, those of us that live in the neighborhood, including yourself, whether or not those remains were ever reinterneed, which was part of the condition. They tried to attach that condition to the condo/hotel project that they were proposing to build at 14 and 15 stories high that was totally incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And that shows you the weakness in our system. I don't know why we go through all this process of having the Guam Land Use Commission meet. In some cases, the tendency is to try to make the conditions meet the concerns of the project, whether it fits or not, to accommodate concerns by the public. It could be related to the infrastructure for water sewer. It could be the need to address upgrading the road project, or perhaps providing a signal light if it's determined that that's necessary, so that it doesn't impede the safety of people traveling in the area. But as the years have gone on, we're finding out that nobody—no government agency, including the Department of Land Management—is enforcing any of these conditions. And these conditions are placed essentially to ensure the quality of life of the surrounding community. I mean, in most cases, the development perhaps can add on to the quality of life of its surrounding neighbors. In other cases, it doesn't. It's totally incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and often in those cases, we try to ensure that conditions are put in place so that it can minimize the impact on the surrounding community. I'm very much of the position that people that have lived for many years, many who build their homes or purchase their homes, probably is their single largest investment that they will make in the course of their life. And I feel that very much a community of village should have a say on what type of development happens in their community. But when you find that the government that regulates this process, the government that provides the authorization to address variances and zone changes does not follow through with these conditions, there's no penalty in the process. And I think that this bill certainly provides a very important step by having these conditions follow the building permit. But granted, there are other conditions that would be put in place that may run after the construction of a project. It could be the monitoring of wildlife that's in the adjacent property, for example. But there's no penalty in place, and perhaps that's something I could work with a good speaker to address, so that there is a process under which—if there's noncompliance, that there's penalties to that, because these are penalties and violations against the community. And it once again points out of the inefficiency in certain areas of our government, where the government itself that authorizes these changes, that sets these conditions, does not follow through in ensuring going down the checklist and making sure—from the time this project is approved, to the time it's in construction, to the time that it's completed—if there are extending conditions beyond that period to verify that that's being done. I often use the example of the Ladera project, and I know, Madam Speaker, you have familiarity in that area, because your family lives there. And if you recall, almost 30 years ago, when Ladera was constructed—I mean, goodness, there's nothing in comparison to the size and the height of Ladera that exists up in the village of Mangila. At the time, many village residents were dealing with low water pressure, brown water coming out through their faucets. Apartment units were up there near the university and GW. In some cases, second or third floor could not have enough water pressure to get water up to the second or third floor of their unit. And it's under those conditions that the Ladera project was approved. Conditions were included for the developer to address the upgrade to the sewer line, the water line, the roads. That particular facility has the ability to accommodate up to 1,000 people in capacity, and it was approved on a two-inch water line. It took many years before the requirement of upgrading the water system was put in place. One of the things Ladera was supposed to do was to construct two water wells. Almost after 10 years, finally, under persistent pursuing of that issue by members of the community and others, finally, the owners of that particular project provided the funding to GWA to construct two water wells. But that was a condition of the approval of the project that was not immediately put into place before the project was received its final occupancy. So you wonder, whose interest is it being built? I mean, Ladera was being built up to the fourth floor without a building permit. How is that possible? You ask yourself. Well, I certainly asked myself that question. We had to intercede twice to have that project shut down until they addressed compliance. But these are the type of things that we need to be concerned about, because if it does affect your home, your neighborhood, your front or backyard, then I know you'll have a concern about it, as many residents did in Pago Bay, who were very concerned about the construction of this high-rise condo/hotel in our neighborhood. Initially, the only way most of us even knew about this project was because those of us that had adjacent property within 500 feet were notified. But to find out all these years later, what is it? 2021. 12, 13 years after these remains were exhumed, we still don't know if the developer has properly reinterneed them. You know, we're banging out the military bases, wanting to ensure compliance by the military, but when it comes to private developers who are doing the very same thing to our ancestral remains, silence. And the government that regulates this process outside the fence is not addressing compliance. I think this is a very important step that this bill provides. I certainly commend Speaker Terlayi for introducing it and responding to the concerns of the residents that have come to her with these concerns. And I certainly hope we might look at the next step of actually looking at imposing penalties if there's noncompliance on ongoing conditional issues that exist beyond the construction and the issuance of an occupancy— construction and the issuance of an occupancy permit on a facility, to ensure that when conditions are set, that they're taken seriously to address the impacts to adjacent properties and to adjacent residents that may be living there. It's unfortunate that this has to be put in place, Madam Speaker, because our government itself, those government agencies that are supposed to be regulating the operations of these issues in the interest of our community are not doing so. The fact that this legislation has to be put in place is a very good example of that. And I hope it brings to light where those areas of deficiency exist so that we can move forward in improving them for the better quality of life of our people. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main question or the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Justin Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this legislation, that all conditional use agreements made with the GLUC will be properly registered with Land Management. This provision will also ensure compliance with these agreements by causing the Director of Land Management to withhold approval of permits should these agreements not be honored. This is a measure of accountability. We are held accountable for working.
Senator Augustine, we could save a tree there and ask if you want to make the motion to add it in at this time.
I just don't have it yet, Proffer, yes, so. I spoke to the author of the bill, she's going to add it on. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Augustine. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Frank Blass, you are recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to join my good colleague from Zigu, in the spirit of wanting to amend a bill to make it better. Actually, simple amendment, Madam Speaker. Page three, line three.
Senator Blass, if I may, I do apologize. I've just been informed by the Sergeant of Arms that our Wi-Fi is down. We're going to take a moment's recess. Amy Nacrenta-Sais, Nalasalitutu, Guam is back from recess. We were on Senator Frank Blass, you're still recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, like I said, in the spirit of being able to make a bill better and so that we can also save the trees and unnecessary ozone damage. It's a simple amendment, page three, line three. Strike out the word territorial.
Does everybody have that? Thank you, Senator Blass. To, on line three, page three, to strike out the word "decision by..."
No, 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 territorial.
Territorial.
Yes, yes.
The word territorial.
Yes.
On that motion, anyone wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Frankie, still have... Anyone else? Thank you, Senator Blass. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Chris Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am related to Senator Mary Torres, but I'm not Torres. Chris Duñez.
Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
It's a great name. Like I told you in one of our public hearings, I have no problems being a tourist. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts on Bill 3936 in support. You know, having been the Director of Department of Land Management before, one of the, one of the most interesting times during the Guam Land Use Commission meetings, of course, is when presentations are made from developers and others coming before the Guam Land Use Commission, trying to get their projects approved. And for the information of the body, as was discussed during the public hearing on this, the Director of Department of Land Management is the ex-official secretary of the Guam Land Use Commission. And during this application process, we hear from all members of the community, particularly a lot of times as the, the commission or the committee from Land Management that's designed to make the report before the hearings of the Guam Land Use Commission on proposals, zone changes, and variances and the like. A lot of times, when that report is made, of course, you have public hearings from, that were held in the mayor's offices in the villages, and you hear, you know, from people in the community expressing their concerns. A lot of times, projects are sent back for changes, particularly when it comes to flooding, particularly when it comes to, you know, just other issues. I know that sometimes on the commercial applications, Madam Speaker, a lot of times you have variances that are asked for, for commercial properties, and people are concerned that bars wouldn't open up near their communities. You know, that sometimes applications for stores, you know, mom and pop stores and other type of requests for zone changes and variances and the like, you know, they want to make sure that embedded in that change and what's made is something that is going to be enforceable and that they're not going to get those unsightly, you know, developments or problematic developments or things that they don't want in their community, you know, to happen in their community. But a lot of times, years down the road, you know, these things pop up. And really, I want to commend the author during the public hearing, and I want to commend Department of Land Management. You know, they were very helpful in the formulation and several amendments to this bill. They were very straightforward in terms of their enforcement capability, or sometimes they're the lack of, Madam Speaker. And so, really, what this bill is trying to do, as I see it and as I went through the public hearing and heard the testimony, is to continue to put some teeth, continue to put some teeth in what we do when we're rezoning properties, when we're allowing for variances. As my good friend from Mordat Talampago and the efforts of her and other members, you know, really had to mount a very strong objection to something that, you know, turned out that that entire community just didn't want. And of course, she enumerated some other issues, but, you know, I sympathize, having been the Director of Department of Land Management, because those reports by the Application Review Committee are not easy to put together. They comprise of a lot of information from regulatory agencies, EPA, GWA, GPA, you know, all kinds of information that comes in, and, you know, tough decisions are made by that board. But when tough decisions are made and, and, you know, conditions are put, they should be adhered to. And this bill makes a strong effort to do that, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author. And I guess this is a pitch to be a cosponsor, so. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the time you've allotted me to just discuss, you know, how much I think that this bill is going to go a long way to help our community be reassured that the things that they don't want in their community aren't going to be there if that's been deemed what the application has called for. And so with that, Madam Speaker, sisus masi talu.
Buantavetso, Senator Duñez. Anyone else? Senator Clint Rigel, on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just rise in support of the measure. I think this is a good bill that closes some loopholes that are out there in the law and loopholes in the process that, as we've heard testimony about and discussion from some of my colleagues about, how it would prevent people from sort of making these promises, making agreements in order to receive a conditional zone variance, and then just not follow through on any of those agreements or any of those promises that they've made. So I think this is a good measure. It'll help close up those loopholes, and I support it. Thank you.
Very welcome, Senator Rigel. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Sabina Perez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this measure. I think it's long overdue, and when this came to my attention many years ago, I was surprised to hear that there was no follow-through with conditional permits. And so many of these projects were being approved, and there was nobody following through to see whether roads were being built, you know, these facilities were being, that were promised to the community were actually being done. And, you know, I appreciate the sponsor for her efforts in creating a sound policy and bill, and I just want to register my support. Sisus Massey.
Buantavetso, Senator Perez. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Therese, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues for their input and that during the public hearing and today, to make the bill better. As they said, the Department of Land Management and the agencies were also very, very helpful in formulation of this bill. I would like to make a motion to add cosponsors to the bill. Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telotite Tugui, and Senator Sabina Perez.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Speaker Therese, you're still recognized.
Thank you. And so I also would just like to take a short while to, just to respond to some of the things that were brought up. So first of all, the effective date, I appreciate that, and that according to our legal, there is a section in the code, 1GCA Section 102, that reads "Effective Date of Statutes." Every law enacted by the Guam Legislature shall go into effect at midnight of the day of its approval by the governor unless otherwise provided therein. So I am good with that effective date without providing any other. It would, in effect, be immediately on enactment. And that, but, and then I also just wanted to address penalties. And so, this bill was a big deal to me, and it took me actually a while to work on it. I've been working on it since last term because of this question of penalties, like what do we do when they do not comply with those terms, those promises that they made? And, you know, but the more I looked at the code, it's, we have existing penalties, and they're actually quite severe. They're placed, these powers are pretty much placed in the Director of Public Works, who is in charge of all buildings, and, and this permitting process. So for example, the building permit itself, if you don't get everybody to sign off, you don't get your building permit. And these agencies, we are relying on them to do their diligence. This bill puts an additional burden on Department of Land Management to assure us that the conditions are complied with, and it puts the burden on Public Works. It also does that in the occupancy permit. And this is, I think, interesting, because Department of Public Works can revoke your occupancy permit for noncompliance, and I think that's a huge penalty, that if you're in the middle of, you know, a business, and they come in and tell you, you haven't complied and threaten to revoke your occupancy permit. I think if they really did that, that, you know, that, then everybody would, you know, know that they're serious and very much comply with the terms that they promised. The other thing, the other opportunity that the government's going to get is in the renewal of business licenses. So business licenses are renewed every year, and you have to list the location of your business. And so that's why Land Management is involved in that process, and hopefully, that's just one more opportunity every year for the Department of Land Management to follow through, that you've not converted the parking that you promised to some other use, right? And this is actually why I got interested in this bill, because I felt like we were struggling to find parking in places that were just not too, not, not built years and years ago. years ago, but built recently relatively, and still we can't find parking. And how did that happen? How did they bypass the parking laws that you're supposed to have so much parking for, you know, uh, that type of, uh, a business? And it's through these variances or through these, you know, conditional uses and, or conditions that were set. And our, if our Land Use Commission is requiring adequate parking, I don't think that they should later on be able to convert that to something else. So that's kind of what piqued my interest. And, um, and so one more thing I would like to, because it was brought up on the record, I think it's a good opportunity. So coincidentally, last term, I was the Chair of, uh, Historic Preservation. So in October, we did follow up about, with the State Historic Preservation Office regarding this reburial in Chalampago. And if I could just, uh, read from their letter real quickly, uh, they said that in the notice of action issued by the Guam Land Use Commission, uh, the developer committed to the compliance for the reburial of the remains found in 11 localities and the required public beach access to the open, the ocean shore. He said, "There have been changes that took place that affected the original location for the reburial monument and the plans for the beach access to the ocean shore. The reburial monument is now located at the left side of the main entrance of the Laguna Pago Bay Resort. The construction is approximately 85% completed with hopes of completion by the end of this year. The remains are stored in the care of the Micronesian Area Research Center, MARC, the contractor for the archaeological research survey for the project." So this letter, by the way, is October 2020. "The compliance to these requirements have been slow due to unforeseen and unexpected circumstances, change of representatives, and now exacerbated with the pandemic." However, um, it goes on to say, "They're still engaged with the developer. They are completing the construction of the reburial monument and the plans and completion of the beach access is also under discussion with Mr. Sherman." Because we live in the area, Madam Speaker, maybe you've also noticed like I have, that there is, uh, clearing and action going on there, and I'm hoping that that's to complete, finally, these reburials and that we can have a proper ceremony and, and that the beach access is also open. Unfortunately, this has become a, this beach area has become a huge dump site, and that's another issue for another bill, but, uh, uh, we really have to take that to task. So finally, I again want to, um, thank my colleagues for their support. This bill will track and enforce the terms and conditions in the notice of actions on conditional use permits, variances, and zone changes by actively including the Department of Land Management as part of the building permit and certificate of occupancy permit process to be another check as to whether the conditions and terms of the GLUC are being applied in the project. And also by requiring that the GLUC information be filed with the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance when Public Works is doing its permitting. And finally, the bill ensures that these terms and conditions run with the property. They can be enforced despite transfer of the property to a different owner. Again, I thank my colleagues and I ask for your support on the bill and I, I move that it be placed to the third reading.
On that motion, without any objections, seeing or hearing none. Motion carries.
Senators Son Augustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill 14-36, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and substitute it on the floor. Sponsored by myself, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Jim Moylan, and is an act amend, Section 61309(c), 4a of Chapter 61, Title 21, Guam Code amended relative to fast-tracking Guam Land Use Commission Conditional Use Application for Temporary Workers' Housing Facilities During Pandemic Conditions of Readiness.
Okay, colleagues, please note that it's a substituted on the floor version. That should be in your, uh, second reading folder, drive, on the drive, from the clerks. All right, Senator, you may proceed. Oh, wait, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. So this is being substituted on the floor. Are there any objections to the substitute on the, the motion to substitute the bill on the floor? On the motion, any objections? Senator Nelson?
Just to clarify, Madam Speaker, this is not uploaded in our drive, right? Just to clarify.
It should be uploaded right now on the drive.
Okay, there's two files. Can you just clarify which one of the files it is? Thank you.
On the title? The label is as amended and substituted on the floor. The label's as amended and substituted on the floor. If this motion carries, the other bills will be removed. Uh, Senator Shelton?
Thank you, uh, Madam Speaker. If you can please clarify, in the, in the drive, the title says as amended and substituted, but when you open the bill, it still says as amended. So is this the same substituted version?
All right, we're going to take a one-minute recess because the clerk's version does not reflect that. You see? It's okay? All right, okay. So just refresh your drives, please, and, uh, find the as amended and substituted version, Bill 14-36. All right. So on the motion to accept the substituted version for our discussion today, is there any objection to the motion to accept the substitute version? Any objection? Please raise your hand. Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senators Son Augustin, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 14-36, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and substitute on the floor to the third reading file and to discuss the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker, my colleagues, and our people of Guam. Bill 14-36 was introduced in consultation with the administration and other stakeholders who saw an important need to address Guam Land Use Commission's Conditional Use Application for Temporary Workers' Housing Facilities during a pandemic, as many GLUC applicants were not being entertained or processed for many reasons. Of these reasons, it was primarily the pandemic that was said to have caused major delays. While I can agree that this pandemic has caused major setbacks for our daily lives, it is unconscionable, consciably, that we failed to address the responsibility placed before us. I want to thank, Madam Speaker, for your leadership in conducting a public hearing and working closely with our stakeholders and my office in drafting this substitute bill. The amendments proffered in Bill 14 will ensure that although it calls for an expedited process, there are rules in place to ensure the safety of the public and the beneficiary of these applicants, applications. I can say that Bill 14 has almost forced GLUC to begin holding hearings, and I can safely guess that is to address these longstanding applicants that have been sitting waiting for their day in a GLUC hearing. You cannot let these applicants wait any longer. It is for this reason that this substitute version will propose to grandfather all applications that have been properly vetted and submitted as of February 11, 2021. So if this bill be passed and signed to law, they have waited too long. We should never wait to address and do our work until we are faced, we are faced with another way of moving things along with regulations. I want to thank my colleagues and co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes and Senator Jim Moylan for their support and, and ask you for, and our remaining colleagues for their support and affirmative vote on this measure. Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi. Senator, on the bill, 14 as substituted, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. I can certainly respect the discussion that, um, due to the pandemic, there have been issues with all government boards, agency meetings, you know, even this Agos body during the 35th Guam Legislature and their ability to meet and come up with the nimble requirements of being able to manage in a pandemic. Having said that, Madam Speaker, I rise in concern with a number of concerns with, uh, Bill 1436. You know, Madam Speaker, when you convened the oversight, uh, for Department of Land Management and, and other reg, and, and other entities regulatory in nature, uh, I remember distinctly all of the regulatory agencies being there, and I specifically asked this question in anticipation of this bill's introduction, having seen this bill's introduction. And I asked them specifically, with the onset of this, the potentiality of this bill, would, would they waive their statutory requirement to do their due diligence on review? And all but one said they would not, and they do not support it. And so, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for the author, if he would so yield.
Please state your questions.
Madam Chair, I, I asked the author of the bill first. In the reading of the bill, at least it's not clear to me, for the purposes of expediting the workforce housing under a pandemic condition of readiness or whatever the, the pandem- Sorry, Madam Speaker. The effects of the pandemic, I, I think my mic doesn't want me to ask a question. What particular regulatory agencies will waive their requirements in order to be able to expedite this process?
Senator Son Augustin, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, um, just clarification, is, my colleague's asking, what agency is going to waive?
Yes.
I don't know which agency needs to waive, if they need to waive, they just need to get their job done. That's my concern. That's why I introduced this bill.
Right, right, Madam Speaker.
Senator Duñez.
Yeah, and I'm addressing the chair. Correct. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out, is that if we're going to expedite this process, it would seem that the only way to really expedite this process would be that certain agencies would have to, would have to maybe forego their review? That, that's the purpose of, of my question. What, what exactly in this, contained in this bill, Madam Speaker, is going to expedite the process when all of the regulatory agencies with, save one, are not willing and don't want to do that, uh, which would be required, uh, for these workforce housing to be, to be approved?
Senator, uh, Son Augustin, would you like to yield again to the restatement of the inquiry?
I, I, Madam Speaker, I'm just going to look over the bill and I ask my colleagues. I'm hoping that your questions are derived because of what you read in the bill, not to insult, but it says there, "Upon compliance condition for approval, the certification by the agencies have to be met." There's nothing expedited. Just do your job. And if you believe that's an expedite motion, a waiver, if they did what they should have done during the, during the pandemic or while we're going through this, well, this process should have been done. All we're trying to do is speed it up. There's not hide behind the pandemic. We've been doing this for nine, 10 months, and we continue to keep moving. So I, I, I'm trying to figure out how to answer, uh, my colleague's question, but we should have asked that then during the hearing, then maybe we would have gotten a more clearer answer.
Thank you, Senator Son Augustin. Senator Duñez, you still have the floor.
So that, Madam Speaker, opens me up to more questions than answers. And I agree with the author of the bill. I agree with the fact that we should have been doing our job. I agree that the regulatory agencies should have been doing their job. I agree that, that all of this pent-up demand, particularly as this bill speaks, that there's a potentiality for our, our housing issues within our community to be, you know, uh, to, to experience extreme pressure because of the fact that apartment buildings and other units, uh, will be occupied by work for, workers coming to, to help with construction. So I don't see how just this bill is going to do that, rather, as the author just said, let's just do our job. I have another question that I'd like to ask the author, Madam Speaker.
Uh, please, Senator Duñez, state your question.
So, um, my question is, was the author aware that during the oversight hearing for the regulatory agencies that was held by Speaker Tulai, particularly surrounding land and, and issues associated with land, that the Director of the Department of Land Management stated that there is currently approval for 22,000 workers as far as the record is concerned, that's, that's current, that's current with Department of Land Management? And there is only currently approximately 5,000 workers in the current workforce housing that we have? And that the proposed going forward would be anywhere between 3,000 to 5,000 in the coming months? And that would not even be half of what is currently being, been approved? I'm wondering, how could we have this shortage if there has been an approval and they're still on the books, approval for facilities up to 22,000 workforce capacity?
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Joseph Augustine, would you like to answer that question or would you like to call for?
I'm trying to understand the question. He mentioned there were so many thousands of people that were approved, 20,000 if I'm correct? He mentioned something like that in that number, and that 3,000?
Madam Chair, according-
No, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer to that. Um, we were, we had a hearing, and I'll move on from there.
Senator Duñez, you still have the floor.
Okay, perhaps offline, I'll, I'll, I'll bring some clarity and ask the author so that I can see if there will be a satisfactory answer to that. But I know that the committee report, or that the record will show, when there was a hearing on the regulatory agencies, uh, particularly surrounding land, uh, by our, by our current chairperson, Speaker Tulai, on the record, the Director of Department of Land Management, Joe Borja, stated that there is currently approval on the books at Department of Land Management that has gone through the GLUC process and everything else for workforce housing for 22,000 members of, of the labor force. That would be required if, 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 if everybody was to show up here, there is currently capacity for 22,000. And so if there's currently only 5,000 that are in workforce housing, and the potential going forward that has been discussed by companies that are going to be bringing in workers over the next several months is between 3,000 and 5,000, that gives me, and my simple math, it says to me that that's only 10,000 workers, which is less than half of what's currently approved by the application process. So I'm just having a little bit of difficulty understanding why we would need to expedite workforce housing when you already have that vol- when you already have that volume that's been approved. So, Madam Speaker, with that, I will continue to listen to the debate on the floor. But I will say that I continue to be very concerned about a bill such as this, because I think that you know, all of the current workforce housing and everybody that's gone through the application process subsequent to this, Madam Speaker, has had to follow the rules, play by the rules, do their due diligence, and ensure that their facilities are going to meet all the requirements. In fact, I want to commend, Madam Speaker, some of those operations. You know that during this pandemic, there was outbreaks in workforce housing. And it looks like public health and coordination with them did a good job because they said, look, we've got these protocols in place. Yes, we've got this spike, but we're going to handle it because we have the protocols. And I'm sure all those protocols exist because of the fact that those individuals knew to hold on to that capability of running that workforce housing, they better be compliant and follow those rules. And so, Madam Speaker, that is my purpose for concern. I certainly don't want to be one that is going to be part of, if absolutely necessary, and not approving this bill, be part of our housing community apartments and other buildings and other, you know, spaces where our families and others could go reside with reasonable rental, not being able to do that because of the fact that they need to be occupied by, you know, workers coming into Guam. But I think we're better than that, Madam Speaker. I think that we have enough capability within our regulatory agencies to do this without having to go through legislation for something that's regulatory in nature to begin with. So, Madam Speaker, I will listen, and perhaps I can be convinced to vote in favor of this measure, but at this point in time, I think the measure is not necessary. And I wish that we would just work closer with our agencies, with our administration, and with the regulatory agencies to see through and do things the right way. And as the author of the bill said, let's just get to work. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone on the main motion? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I mean, I did attend the public hearing on this bill, and I do recognize the issues that have been raised. But one of the things that does concern me in this process, and yes, I understand we've been going through this pandemic, what is taken out of this whole review process with the Land Use Commission is the public input. It's stated in this bill that because of the, essentially because of the pandemic and the executive order, they were not able to hold such public hearings. I do recognize that the location of these worker barracks is are in M1 zones, but you know, at the end of the day, my view is always that the people of Guam should always have a say with regards to these projects. Otherwise, they wouldn't be going through the Land Use Commission if they were fully zoned for the locations that they are going to be constructed in. And you know, some of them are fairly small, others, you know, involve the housing of several hundred or more individuals. And one thing that it does, I mean, I see that it's been added that the municipal planning councils of the respective villages where these projects are going to be located, you know, require a resolution of support. And certainly, I think that's a step forward, but overall, individual residents that might live in these particular villages don't have an ability, if this bill is passed, to have any input in this process. And that always concerns me. I mean, we've made accommodations, I mean, the legislature is able to hold public hearing through Zoom in order to get public input on different legislation. It didn't essentially paralyze the ability of the legislative branch of government for the people to speak in their own house with regards to any input they wanted to make with regards to legislation that was before this body. I don't see any reason why other accommodations, including if needed amendments to laws, could have been easily made to accommodate this so that this process could move forward, knowing that in spite of this pandemic, these construction projects, particularly where this is focused and intended for on the base, were moving forward anyway. I mean, I know the issue was raised during the hearing as to why these worker housings were not being built on the base where these projects are being constructed so that it doesn't adversely affect the local community. We had heard during the public hearing that this was going to adversely affect our residents because these workers would be living in apartments and and condominium, you know, housing among our people versus being, you know, consolidated collectively in these worker housing locations. But it does bring to bear that question, and then the feedback we got was that the military didn't want these workers to be living on base, even though they would be working there on a fairly regular basis. I think that would have resolved the issue for the local community. But nevertheless, now the local community is having to be burdened with this. And yet, by the passage of this bill as it's worded, there's no mechanism. The one thing that does get cut out of this process is the public input. And that I have a concern with, taking that out and not including the people of Guam to have that opportunity for Department of Land Management to not move forward to try to make accommodations to accommodate public input. If the Guam Legislature can hold hearings on Zoom, I don't see any reason why accommodations could have been made with Department of Land Management. And if there's something that in the law that would have prohibited them from doing that, you know, this body could have very easily addressed that issue. I mean, this is significant because the construction of these facilities don't necessarily disappear when the workers disappear. And that also came up during the public hearing. These could be permanent structures that may be there for many, many years, and after the workers are no longer there, may be vacant. You know, are they going to fall into disrepair as some of these other properties we see around the island that Public Works is now working on trying to coordinate with village mayors to clean up? I don't know. But taking the people out of the process bothers me. I don't think there's anything that critical that does not allow for public input that should be acceptable, because there are other means that this could have been accommodated and even during this pandemic, be it this project or any other project that was going through the Land Use Commission process. The fact that they do require this change to the land use obviously involves a change that doesn't exist under the M1 zoning that these facilities are going to be constructed in. So I do rise in objection because of that main issue of taking the public input process out of the review with regards to the construction of these worker barracks. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Tony Etta, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I agree with my, the previous speakers, my colleagues who have spoken about the concern of transparency. And as you know, Madam Speaker, this past 11, 12 months have not been easy for anyone. The toll that it's taken on our government, the toll that it's taken on private businesses. But as the months went on, when you look at what has been in the executive orders and then what is permitted activities in the executive orders, they did not stop government, official government hearings from being conducted, official government business. And I think should this bill pass, like the previous speaker had said, it does concern me as well because when you look at the committee report, it's mentioned by the mayors that in the past, as Mayor Luis Rivera has spoken, she has said here that in the past, with all the fast tracking that has been going on, it did not do a lot of justice because property owners felt that they were not informed. That, so that's why we want to make sure that all the stakeholders or the property owners surrounding the businesses are informed. And that's not just a concern of the mayor from Timuning, but also from MTM and Bergada. So this does say a lot as to what's going on out there, as to how our our people are feeling where they want continued transparency as to what is going on in their villages. And if the village mayor has a concern, then we here in this body should also be concerned. I believe that the process of having a hearing, we can have session or public hearings via Zoom, so can the GLUC. So we need to ensure that the process is followed. We need to ensure that the law is followed. Let's not keep making exemptions for because of a pandemic. We need to ensure that still the law is followed and that still there transparency. Because if we don't, then we just take, there's no use of having any type of disclosure. We just go ahead and say, well, we'll just move forward and go ahead, just pass it. But it's this body that turns around and gets slammed for everything when we, upon our actions or inactions. So we need to make sure that when we do pass legislation, that it's always in the best interest of our people, that it's transparent, and that it promotes transparency. Because if we don't, then we become a part of the problem and not the solution. So we need to continue to be a part of the solutions going forward. I hope my colleagues, you know, we, let's really think about this bill. We need to think about this and what it's going to do and what kind of precedence it will set moving forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Etta. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm listening intently to the discussion that is offered here, and I'm also looking specifically at the law right now and what this bill proposes to amend. I don't, I'm not necessarily alarmed by the bill, Madam Speaker, because I think that it's setting the parameters where it has to do with applications pending for conditional use for the development of temporary workforce housings submitted to GLUC prior to February 11, 2021. And what it is asking is for a waiver of the of the public hearing that's required. Now, that in and of itself should cause people to wonder, why would we want to suspend the public hearing for something that is otherwise provided for in law? But in looking at the temporary housing and what is contemplated with that temporary housing conditional use, I am not so alarmed with this bill in that it has to do with conditions and approvals to include minimal conditions. And one is, it's for, one of the conditions is an initial term of 24 months. We're talking about 24 months and thereafter to be renewed annually. Renewals in the forms issued by the chief planner and subject to inspection by the chief planner and a public hearing before the GLUC. The other condition that's still in there also is, it must be, the things that you would be concerned with with development, like adequate sanitary sewer system, that is still part of the approval. Adequate fire flow indicated by six inch water line, other minimum water service conditions, those are also in there. And also complying with all health and safety regulations of the government and OSHA regulations as applicable. Madam Chair, I think what many of us are concerned about with the idea of progress and not impeding progress is where there is a need to provide for temporary workforce housing. It is in our best interest to make sure that this basic infrastructure is in place so that the progress and the building on Guam can occur as scheduled, which will also not only benefit the island in that there's always a benefit when things are done expeditiously and not delayed, causing further cost to the developers. But with that said, Madam Speaker, I'm just looking at what this bill is intending to do, and it's intending to allow for something to proceed given the circumstances that with COVID and the restrictions that it has placed on gatherings and public hearings and the like. What is still in place is adequate noting, noticing, I believe, in terms of of putting in signage that's visible for a certain period, advertising newspapers for a certain period, requiring a resolution and support from the municipal planning council of the village where it is proposed. So I think that the attempt to reach the public in certain ways exists there, and they're not unreasonable ways. But mostly, I would say that if I were to support or not support this measure, I think that under the circumstances with COVID, we do have to think about ways to allow progress to proceed. And and there are, there are measures in place for people to be aware and for the municipal planning council to opine. What concerns me, Madam Chair, is the permitting process generally on Guam is extremely cumbersome compared with other jurisdictions. And where that impedes progress, especially where there is going to be a known need for temporary workforce housing, we should facilitate that effort. And so with that, I rise in support of this measure. I think that it's not detrimental, and if anything, it allows for the continuation of a building plan and all the considerations that are needed for housing workers, but also containing all of the safety and the safety and the OSHA regulations that you would expect in any sort of housing facility to include sewage, water, fire suppression, and other health concerns. So I rise in support, Madam Chair, and I think that sometimes drastic measures are needed in drastic times, and I believe the COVID pandemic has put us in a situation where operating as normal isn't a convenience that we have, and we have to provide for other options to not impede progress or plans on our island. Sizus Massey.
One for Betsu. Senator Telotit, we on the main motion, you are recognized.
Sizus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to raise my concerns regarding this measure. I'm glad some of my colleagues who mentioned some of the circumstances or the comments that were made during the public hearing, the concerns of the mayor was well, well put by my previous colleague who had mentioned their concerns. My colleague who spoke first on this measure with regards to the 22,000 workers that have already, worker housing already approved tells you already that the planning of this was done way in advance. So why weren't these permits and the process through the Guam Land, Guam Youth Land Commission done way in advance? I had asked that question. And they said that, well, we really had to wait until certain projects were coming up in order to put these individuals or bring these people to Guam and build these these housing for the workers. And we knew that this buildup was happening many years. It's been almost what, since the 30th Guam Legislature, when we knew the buildup was coming. So that's almost 10 years ago. We also know the peak of when the workers are going to be coming to Guam and how many individuals that it's moving forward is going to affect. So the question was asked, why didn't they do this in advance? Well, actually, that hence the 22,000 workers that were approved earlier, work housing that were approved earlier. So what has changed in this scenario, we really couldn't get an answer to that. But I think we do have a greater concern here, Madam Chair, or Madam Speaker. And that is leaving the public out of the process, we're setting a very dangerous precedence. A very dangerous precedent. One of the individuals that testified, Madam Speaker, said it so eloquently when he, in his testimony, that public interest, safety, and protection is like a tripod. And if you take one of those legs out of the equation, the tripod will fall. We have certain measures and rules and regulations that this body has put into place for a reason. And that is the protection and the safety and public interest that we uphold to ensure that the public, we are doing everything that these three legs of the tripod is up and standing. The COVID now is considered the new norm. The COVID now is considered the new norm. We have to move into the new norm, the new direction, but not at the expense of the safety, protection, and public interest. So I'm hoping my colleagues realize this, that there are ways to maintain the public input. One of the things that, before I end, Madam Speaker, one of the things that was said that we were going to allow the mayors to actually review or even speak with their municipal council about this. I haven't seen any report. I'm quite surprised that this bill came out this soon without allowing, which was requested by all these mayors, to give us the opportunity so we can go back to our municipal councils and talk about this and come back to the legislature with our findings. But we didn't allow them to do that. We're here today debating on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Tite, anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Therese, Speaker, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I pursue my remarks, I just want to point out that as the committee chair who heard this bill, I did issue a supplemental committee report dated February 12. I transmitted therein, it's the Baragota Municipal Planning Council's resolution in regards to this bill. Actually, and in regards to the projects that were slated for Baragota that we discussed in the public hearing on this bill. And I submitted that to committee on rules, but I could also make that available if it's not up online. All right, and so on the bill. As introduced, this bill originally proposed to waive all of the following steps in the regular Guam land use permitting process for temporary workers' housing facilities. Those steps include the technical review by the application review committee agencies, which consist of Department of Public Works, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, the Department of Agriculture, Guam Power Authority, Guam Waterworks Authority, Department of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation Office. It also proposed to waive the written notice of public hearing by certified mail to property owners within a radius of 500 feet. And to waive the notice of public hearing on a four-by-eight-foot sign on the property. And to waive the notice of public hearing by a newspaper. To waive the municipal public hearing in the village of the proposed project. To waive resolution and support by the municipal planning council. And to waive the Guam Land Use Commission meeting an action in regards to the conditional use application. Because the bill proposed to eliminate these very important parts of the GLUC process in order to fast-track these temporary workforce housing facility applications, as committee chair, I did some research to find out exactly what projects this bill seeks to encompass. I provided maps and locations of the pending applications during the public hearing and included them in the committee report so that the public, as much as I could, would be fully aware of where these potential projects would be. And especially if this was going to be the community's only chance to comment, I wanted them to know that this was going to be built or these were going to be built in their neighborhoods. There are currently five conditional use applications for temporary workforce housing facility applications with the Department of Land Management. So I contacted the mayors whose villages would be impacted by these projects, including Harmon, Baragota, Maiti, and Dedido. I wanted those mayors to ask, to weigh in, and I asked them, and they took time out of their schedule to come to the public hearing and testify, despite having other plans. You know, the other mayors were all involved in other activities that day. But all of them were there at the hearing. They provided extremely valuable input on this bill, and I am very grateful for their participation and for representing their villages. They all support actual public hearings in their villages, and they were concerned that Zoom would exclude participants. They did not seem to support Zoom hearings because that would, they thought, exclude participants in their villages that could not, you know, access via Zoom. And so some of them had actually already scheduled public hearings for some of these measures, and they were, they all seemed very anxious, as colleagues have testified, to not, let's not go backwards in this process by, you know, lessening the public input. After hearing from the mayors, the committee amended, I amended the bill. The committee amended the bill to ensure some forms of public notice were still included in the process for the temporary workforce housing facilities. So the bill now includes signage on the property for the proposed project that's back in. That's so that nearby landowners can see the signs and know that there's something planned for that area and check with their mayors or the Department of Land Management as to what the details are. The signs actually detail how many workers would be housed at the facilities in those locations. The bill also requires two newspaper ads so that the community will be informed about the project. And it does mandate that a resolution of support be obtained from the municipal planning council of the affected village before the Department of Land Management allows the application to move forward to the permitting process. The bill then does allow the expedited, going straight to the building permitting process and the sanitary permit and workers' dormitory permit process. Before I go any further, if I could just, for the record, say for those who are listening to us today, where these projects are located and how many workers we're talking about. So the first one is in Tezen, across from San Vicente Church in site Tezen. It's going to convert an existing warehouse. It's a project by NAN Inc. It's going to allow for 852 workers to be placed there. There's a project, two projects in Harmon. This is in Harmon Industrial Park. It's between Ellie's Auto Shop and the Harmon Industrial Park Road. The first lot would add on to 400 that are there already. It would add on 350 for a total of 750. This is a project by Black Construction. And adjacent to that lot is another lot, also Black Construction, that's going to allow for 672 workers. There's an application for Baragota for 135 workers. This is, if you go off of Route 16 down Bello Road and you, off of Bello Road is Tun Pedro Maria Beneventi Street. It's a street that will take you into other warehouses such as Midpac Distributors, IDI. But of course, there are residences also in this area. This is Ian Corporation. It is for 135 workers, as I said earlier. The other project is in Maiti. And this is, they say there are existing workers in these facilities. This is kind of next to Maiti Payless, or Payless Maiti off of Route 8. And it's going to accommodate 84. And testimony on that proposal, former Senator Willie Flores was the representative, and he said that they actually have people in there. They're just going through the formal processes that are somehow, I don't know what happened, but they needed to go through these formal processes for those 84 that are already in there. All right. So can, you know, the developers, of course, are asking that we expedite these particular pending temporary workforce housing facility applications, many of which were submitted sometime between six months to 16 months ago. And the pandemic conditions in part delayed the GLUC process for these applications. We found, the committee found that there are other factors that have plagued the GLUC process and, you know, in addition to the pandemic. However, yeah, despite requests from the developers, executive orders that prohibited public hearings, including GLUC public hearings or DLM public hearings or municipal planning council hearings, failed to address the systemic needs of the Guam Land Use Commission. So I normally do not support the bypassing of the GLUC process as it is set to make important determinations that will impact the economic, social, and environmental health of our community. I agree that we should ensure a balance between efficient use of land and resources and preventing negative effects of land. And that is critical. And that's why this process of the GLUC is critical. But it was presented to us in the committee as well that if we do not act now to allow these particular workforce housing, that they are authorized by law to place these 2,000 HTB workers set to arrive on our island in the next month, including March, that we will, they will be placed in apartment units or any other units that they can find available for them immediately. And I think the village mayors, you know, as well as myself, you know, there are concerns about allowing that as well, Madam Speaker. And as we've seen during the pandemic, one person discussed how public health was able to catch, you know, the COVID in one of these workforce housing areas and pretty much do a review of all of them. And if they were not located in these workforce housing areas and spread all over, I can't imagine, you know, public health's response to that. But I think we were lucky in that regard. At least they were able to catch it and settle it. But I don't, you know, I'm just saying, there are reasons why workforce housing is, is, I think, easier for public health to do its part in the sanitary permits, especially during COVID, and, you know, the workers' dormitory permit, because they have very strict, strict, strict guidelines that they must follow under those types of permitting. And this law, this bill, does not at all affect that permitting. Because as opposed to putting these workforce housing, workforce workers in, you know, residential areas throughout our community, such as apartment buildings or other units, houses, I would like to see that they are placed in the M1 zones as intended and that with specific regulations for these facilities, that they continue to be in place. When, when these applications, if this bill passes and these workforce applications, these five applications go for building permit, the building permit process also allows review by regulatory agencies such as Guam Waterworks, the State Historic Preservation Office, Department of Land Management, but, I mean, other agencies as well. And I'm, you know, we're putting pressure on them right now by this bill, I think. And, but I think we should rely on them to be very courageous in their action because they are the last resort. They, when they review the building permit and the occupancy permits, should hold these facilities accountable for every portion of the law that they can and to ensure the safety of the people of Guam. I'm very grateful that the bill was substituted on the floor to really narrow it down to only those projects that are pending. It removes any potential application to any other projects, even during the emergency, because the mayors have said they are beginning their public hearing processes now and that we shouldn't have to allow this anymore for any future applications. I think going forward, we should not remove the multiple opportunities for feedback, the input from the subject matter experts, the village mayors, the surrounding landowners, and community members. So again, it's a tough call on this bill. But I think for these applications that have been pending for quite some time, and because the workers are coming in as we speak, Madam Speaker, I want them to be accommodated in these facilities that are created just for them, in M1 zones, and that they, and that to facilitate public health, you know, review of their living conditions, to require that, you know, medical expertise be available on-site, and all the other requirements that go along with that. And I trust that with the other conditions that we have put into this bill, as well as allowing the Department of Land Management at the preliminary application interview stage to also set its own conditions, that, you know, that with the help of the mayors, landowners in the adjacent areas will be notified, and with the help of the mayors, their input will be accommodated, and the municipal planning councils will not approve these projects without getting that type of input from their communities. And so because of that, yeah, I think we are making a very, very narrow exception for these five projects that have been pending for these very many months due to the prohibition on GLUC, municipal planning councils, Department of Land Management from having their public hearings. And hopefully, we will never have to allow such an exception again, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Chalai. Anyone else? Senator Frank Blasch, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to the committee chair for being able to explain some of the changes. Very significant. Before I start this, Madam Speaker, I want to thank the, and recognize the sponsors of the legislation for their efforts to try to rectify this issue. But, Madam Speaker, yeah, as reading through the bill and the legislative intent and being a part of the public hearing and then in this process here, I have to wonder and realize first off that this action was necessarily or needing to take this action by this body is necessary because the governor said the government is shut down. I'm interested to find out, Madam Speaker, and if you can, I have a question and I can yield to any of the sponsors or to anybody in this room.
Please take your questions. Please take your questions.
The question basically is, did the administration or the governor ask for help in being able to move this along? Did they send anything formally, a letter, saying, you know, because we shut down and these things couldn't move and this wave is going to be hitting us? We need your help in being able to correct the situation so you can, so can you provide this wave, albeit temporary, albeit one of a kind? Why are we doing this? So that's my question.
I'll go ahead and ask the author, the primary author, Senator Joe San Agustin. Would you like to answer that inquiry? You are recognized.
What was the question? Was, were we asked by the administration?
Yes.
If I'm correct, that was stated earlier. It was facilitated by the administration and the stakeholders of the impact of the temporary workers coming to Guam. They asked for assistance because during the shutdown.
Okay, but I guess, Madam, let me clarify this even better.
Senator Blas, does that suffice?
Can I clarify this question? And I recognize, I understand when he says the administration referencing, and I'm assuming referencing the Department of Land Management. But they were taking orders from Adalou. I wanted to come in. They were taking orders from Adalou. Let's lay it all out here because we need to. Did anybody from the governor's office transmit to this body a request to provide some assistance so that we can get this process moving?
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator San Agustin, would you like to answer that? Or?
No.
You know what?
Madam Speaker, I didn't get no letter. I got the draft bill. I was trying to figure out why didn't the government just do whatever they can do? And at the end of the day, we had folks that needed to do the development, ma'am, that were asking, is there any way you can help us so we can get this development going? And that's why I worked with the committee chair and says, let's try to figure out how we can work this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Blas, you still have the floor. Does that help?
Thank you. And unfortunately, Madam Speaker, kind of figured and assumed that that was going to be the response. But you know, and again, I go back. I want to thank the members. I want to thank the sponsors, co-sponsors, and the committee in trying to be able to resolve this. But you know, it goes back to one of the concerns that the people have had, the people of Guam have had over the last few months. Life doesn't end. Things need to get done. Government still needs to function in these roles that they have to function. And now we're sitting here and we're debating and we're looking at ways that, okay, it didn't get done because there was orders. Now we have to fix it. And now we have to make sure that in fixing this, we craft the language so that it's very specific. But like my colleague from Baragada stated earlier, I'm concerned about the precedence that this is going to be setting. Excuse me. Don't mistake that for wanting to make sure and help. I understand. I hear the concerns about making sure that there is, for the protection and the safety and keeping these individuals, you know, in the housing as opposed in the neighborhoods. I appreciate that the amendments to this have addressed some of the concerns about public input, albeit maybe not at the length and not as long or not in the timeframe that is most desired. What else are we going to have to fix? I do recall about a year ago or a few months ago, members of this body in the previous, were asking, how can we help? What do we need to do? And this body was all, sit back, relax, don't worry. We got it under control, under control. We were put in a position now to have to make these kinds of decisions. That's like the good author says, the gentleman from Jiggle. This should have been rectified. This should not have been an issue on February 15 had it been resolved, had it been taken care of back then. Does that improve or does that make this bill any better? How many more times are we going to have to do this? Are we not? I don't know. Maybe what I want to do is I'm going to wait to see. Is there a word, a letter from the administration that's going to say, we need help? Yes, this is the, we're in this predicament. We put us, we put us in this predicament. We need your help. Because in one side, we got frustrated. We got, we got companies that are frustrated that have been waiting. They're trying to do their diligence. We have a community that's concerned. And it's now left to this body to have to fix this mess. I don't know why I stand on this bill yet. Because, again, this was something that should have been done. This is something I know that this body in a previous legislature was asking if there's anything that needed to be done. And now we're made to be the bad guys. I apologize for the many of you who had to serve in the previous administration that you were put in this position. I just question and I wonder, how many more times are we going to have to do this? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator San Agustin, would you like to close?
Not required. I think there's been enough discussion to send it down to the third reading. Thank you.
On the motion to place Bill number 14-36COR to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries.
Colleagues, we are now on Bill, still on second reading. We're on Bill number 38-36COR. Senator Titikui, you are recognized.
So do us, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 38, I mean, 38-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, an act to amend 61106B of Article 1, Chapter 61, Division 2, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing extensions of deadlines to submit reports or position statements to the Application Review Committee and the administrative fine for the director of a member agency of the Application Review Committee that fails to provide required reports or position statements on land use applications to the third reading file for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and for this opportunity to introduce Bill 38-36 as amended, I thank the legislature's legal bureau and your office for reviewing the bill and preparing the committee report in time for this session. Madam Speaker, Bill 38 seeks to provide more responsive process for reviewing applications that are before the Land Use Commission through a reasonable review period for members, member agencies of the Application Review Committee or the ARC. Currently, the ARC member agencies are required, to the maximum extent possible, to provide position statements and reports within 30 days after filing for land use applications and before the application is scheduled for public hearing at the village level. The bill replaces the current 30-day period with a 45-working-day period with up to two 14-working-days extension for the maximum period of 30, maximum period of 73 working days, which amounts to little more than three months. Madam Speaker, the time proposed in Bill 38 provides ARC member agencies more than 30 calendar days but establishes a new time limit which is not optional and where violations will result in an ARC member agency director paying a $250 administrative fine as a personal expense. Madam Speaker, based on information provided during the January 21, 2021 oversight hearing involving the Guam Land Use Commission, there were 40 applications pending GLC action prior to the beginning of COVID-19, public health emergency in March of 2020, and 25 new applications were submitted after March 2020. Of the 65 applications, two applications were scheduled for review at a January 28, 2021 Guam Land Use Commission meeting. Research was completed for 10 applications and 10 applications were at the research stage of the process. Madam Speaker, based on additional information provided during the GLUC oversight hearing, it was made known that 47 land use applications, projects including temporary worker housing, telecommunications facilities, multifamily apartment buildings, single-family residential buildings, warehouses, conversions of inactive hotel to multifamily apartment units, maintenance and storage buildings, and more, have yet to move forward. As I shared during the public hearing on Bill 38, the 47 projects pending GLUC action presents a combined investment value of $1.9 billion. Without considering the multiplier effect, these projects, if approved, may yield through new jobs and support for our local restaurants, retail stores, telecommunications, healthcare facilities, and across many other industries. In closing, Madam Speaker, I wish to read into the record part of the testimony provided by the Department of Land Management in 2019 on a bill that's nearly identical to this bill, 38-36, which, for your information, was approved by the majority of the senators but ultimately rejected by Adalou. The Department of Land Management requested the legislature to reestablish the 60-day period with two 10-day extensions instead of the current 30 days, timeframe allowed by current law. And in the follow-up letter of the legislature, the agency stated its support, and quote, that if position statements are not submitted before or at the multiple public hearing, a provision should be made that the member agency has issued a default no objection and that the administrative fine still should apply, unquote. Madam Speaker, between the one-week review period suggested during the public hearing on Bill 38-36 by the land use technical expert with more than 40 years of combined government and private sector experience and the 80-day period previously stopped by the Department of Land Management, Bill 38-36 seeks a reasonable review period in order for land use applicants to move forward. Madam Speaker, requiring a director of the ARC member agency to do his or her part ensures that land use applications is reviewed and a position statement is made available by the agency in a timely manner is nothing out of the ordinary and nor is it in position of a $250 administrative penalty for him or her should their agency fail to provide a position statement in a timely manner. Currently, 17 GCA Section 3133B5 imposes a $250 fine for each voting member absent from an educational financial supervisory commission meeting, which will result in a lack of quorum. That's a fine that's implemented on them. Another fine, Madam Speaker, is 5 GCA Section 30107 holds the Attorney General personally responsible for ensuring that all opinions and memorandum are delivered to the Legislative Secretary and the compiler of all or is subject to a fine of $100 at his or her expense for each option of memorandum which is not delivered by both the Legislative Secretary and the compiler of law within the time period subscribed by law. Another one, 5 GCA 4103.1 imposes a $250 fine for BBIMAR director should he or she fail to submit the legislature on the 5th of each month a report on all special funds transferred made to recover appropriations authorized by the annual budget. And the last one, Madam Speaker, that, of a few more, but I'll just end it with this one, is 5 GCA Section 10112, better known as FOIA law, allows if a court finds that a public official's decision to refuse disclosure to not justified is not justified under law, that the official shall be personally responsible for a $1,000 fine. Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to also hold the leadership and member agencies of the Application Review Committee responsible for not providing the position statements in a timely manner. By approving Bill 38-36, this legislature will add teeth to the current law which has unfortunately stalled economic growth, particularly at a critical time when our tourism industry remains closed and when thousands of Guamanians unemployed have much less hours to earn an income because of the devastating impact of COVID-19. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me brief remarks on my, on Bill 38. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me brief remarks on my, on Bill thirty-eight dash thirty-six.
Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six, would anyone like to speak? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I certainly do support the bill, but I, but I think the sponsor of the bill continues to bring up a challenge that we're seeing in the government of Guam, and it does make you wonder why we have to put penalties in place to get department and agencies that have specific duties under their, their oversight responsibilities that they need to do, that we have to find them in order to execute their job. And I think that's something that this brings to light. It's unfortunate for the ARC Application Review Committee because certainly for those of us that have actually run departments, uh, you know, we do have specific mandates that we would have to execute, um, and this has been an ongoing issue. Of course, the director himself or herself is not the one generally that generates the position statement of a department or agency that's involved in the overview or permitting of, of project. But I think it's a sad statement. I think the fact that this issue, I mean, today earlier with your bill, um, you know, concerning attaching conditions to a permit, again, something under the oversight of the Department of Land Management and now here for members of the ARC Department Directors are going to have to be fined because it's, it's been shown time and time and time again that, um, responses from some of these department or agencies have not been forthcoming for whatever the reason may be. And I think it's a sad state in running a department that you have to be, have these type of penalties put in place because there's a public expectation for the operations of your department to be met and they're not being met. And that's why these penalties now, I guess, out of frustration, because certainly from the legislative branch of government, it's not our job to operate the government of Guam. Certainly, our job is to set policy and our other job is to pass the budget for the government. That's pretty much the main job of legislators. But the fact that we're having to, to show a degree of frustration that this bill represents because of lack of response from these government department and agencies to perform their duties and responsibilities, particularly with regards to these projects. I mean, I'm not always anti-development. I think if there are good projects that are being built and proposed for our community that's going to stimulate our economy, that that's something good. And yet, when you have to go through the process, uh, yes, it can be challenging, especially if department or agencies don't respond. You know, in the short time of being back in office, what, little over, what, six, five, six weeks, seven weeks now, I kind of reminded that there are many challenges of our own residents that are frustrated within our community because of the lack of response that they, as individual citizens, cannot go to a respective department or agency and get a response on an issue that's of concern to them, maybe land-related, maybe infrastructure-related. But they feel they have to come to a senator because they cannot get a response on their own as an individual citizen in this community. Again, we're seeing frustration from, from individuals or companies that want to propose a project for construction that are not getting the feedback within a timely manner. And it, it really comes down to, the major issue is to why is that the case? Why is it the case where these department or agencies that have these respective responsibilities are not addressing that? Why is that? Because the one thing that hasn't stopped in this pandemic or as the government of Guam, you know, directors and all are all getting paid, that hasn't slowed down. But the ability to ensure that, uh, you know, responsibilities and jobs are being performed and that there's a responsiveness to the respective community, be it a company or an individual that's applying for these type of permits and review process through the Application Review Committee are not receiving responses in a timely manner. I mean, this is something the governor of Guam should be calling in the respective department directors then and giving them the one-two about. I don't know if it's laid back or what, but I, I certainly would expect that. I think that's something the community would expect. And the fact that we do this, I mean, I'm just going to say it, the fact that we are entertaining this bill or having to entertain this bill because of a general frustration in the community and within the business sector that's applying for these type of projects shows that the respective department and department directors are not executing their responsibilities. And they can point the finger to their subordinate and say so-and-so in the department didn't perform, didn't write the report, didn't do this, didn't do that. But as we say at the end of the day, it's the department directors that are responsible for the departments that they oversee. And this is an old story. This whole issue with the Application Review Committee is something that's been out there for quite some time. I understand the challenges and concerns that have been raised by the author of this particular bill, and I will support this bill. But I think we need to note that this is just another example of where our government is not, you know, not performing their respective duties to which they have been charged, and individuals that are occupying these positions are not ensuring that the responsibilities that they have been charged are being met. And I think that's an unfortunate statement, uh, but nevertheless, I will support this bill. If this is what it takes, unfortunately, to get responses out of department and agencies, then so be it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There certainly seems to be a theme this afternoon. You know, Madam Chair, I rise in support of Bill thirty-eight, thirty-six, and, um, I want to say that the author has been very, I think, been very generous here by working with Department of Land Management and getting input once again on the roundtable that you held whereby all regulatory agencies were participating. I, I remember the author, um, kind of shopping this bill a little bit in terms of, you know, the thirty days and, and to, and to really take it to where it is now in terms of the extensions and moving forward. I mean, I think that was just simply a recognition of, look, and I remember the author asking, you know, give, give me something that you can work with. I remember you, Madam Speaker, asking that same question, you know, give us something you can work with so that when we do tighten up these regulations, when we do say, look, we want to be clear, we want you to review this properly. I remember, I think the, the individual captivated me the most was Edwin Rages, uh, down at Stats and Plans. I mean, for all the discussion sometimes on, on, on our government and, and, and our requirement and our desire for, for effective management, I got to say, we have some really sharp people in our government. We have some individuals who really, really know what they're doing and care about this island and, and want to get the work done. And I was, I was particularly impressed by Edwin because, you know, he, he took responsibility for turning this thing around and, and, and gave a lot of input to this bill. And so I think that overall, I, I, I was glad the, uh, the author didn't come to me and ask me, why did you check report out only? And, and the reason why he did, Madam Speaker, is I wanted a full explanation on the issue of the fine. And the reason why I decided that I'm going to go ahead and, 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 you know, understand that implication was because of all of the examples that she gave on other boards, commissions, and entities whereby there is, there, you know, there is some teeth behind that. I don't, I don't know if that's going to be a deal breaker. I don't know what the balance of the argument's going to be on the floor. But I just want to say that, uh, obviously with all these, uh, land bills that we're dealing with, with all these regulatory bills that we're dealing with, trying to protect our public, you know, I, I gotta, I gotta say, this legislature really, with these bills, is being extremely sincere about the fact of looking out for the public, looking out for folks to make sure that their environment is, is, as the retiring speaker said, you know, not all development is bad, that stuff that's approved that has, with your bill, as you've put forth, more teeth and enforcement on conditions and the like, that we, we've got to continue moving forward with our population growth and providing for economic diversity, diversity and expansion. But we've got to do it with our regulatory agencies, making sure they do their due diligence. But they also, but we also cannot have these individuals who have put millions of dollars a lot of times into their investment in the application process before they even, you know, sit down, depending on the size of the project, usually it's a few hundred thousand, but there, there are projects that go in the millions in terms of preparation, hotels and the like. So I just want to say that I think that the author's been very reasonable, and I remember the Director of Department of Land Management also being very reasonable in his approach on, on this bill, and, and I believe she's even, the author has mentioned that in terms of other hearings and meetings to which the director said that, you know, he also wants to make sure that, um, there's balance and due diligence. So, Madam Speaker, I thank you once again for allowing me to speak on, on Bill thirty-eight, thirty-six, which I believe is a, a very important bill, and I, and I rise in support. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. Any other members would like to speak on Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six COR? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do want to thank the author for, you know, really being generous, like the previous speaker had mentioned, in, in shifting some of the, the penalties so that it's not as harsh, and I do appreciate those efforts. There was something that was brought up in the public hearing regarding, uh, should the written, um, statement, position statement not be provided, that perhaps the requirement, the alternate requirement would be to have the director be present at the GLUC meeting, and I just wanted to, uh, check with the sponsor of the bill if this is something that, um, she would be amenable to as far as an amendment. Or what would her, I guess, the question I have for the author of the bill is, yeah, what is, uh, what is her take on that?
Senator Taitikui, would you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I will, and if, I'm sorry, I was, um, preoccupied with something right now. I just heard the, the last part of it, but the first part, uh, she wanted to know my take on what, if you don't mind.
Senator Perez, could you please restate the question?
Thank you.
Yes, I, I do. Uh, so basically, there was a comment or suggestion requiring directors to be present. Should they not provide the written position statements? Is this something that, um, yeah, I would just like to, to get her take on that.
Senator Taitikui, do you yield to the question?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the good, uh, Senator from Baragada for that question. And I absolutely agree that, you know, the ARC should be attending these meetings, especially these public hearing meetings, um, at the municipal council level, and, um, it, it was actually brought up, Madam Speaker, if I may, um, by one of those who testified on mentioning that the ARC, sometimes it's, you know, the, the documents that they fill out, the form that's filled out to answer any questions, whether it comes from EPA, BBSP, or the other agencies that are part of the ARC, that the majority of questions that are asked by the public, um, you know, they're not there. Like, if they wanted to ask something regarding floodwater, uh, or, or an environmental impact, sometimes the agencies are not there to answer the questions of, of the public when they have these meetings. So absolutely, I, I feel that they should be present at all these meetings, but we do understand there, you know, it's very difficult just to try and get them to do the report, and that's what we're here today, is to address the, just to get them to get these reports so that the process can, can continue to move at a timely manner. Because like you know, Madam Speaker, anytime investors come to this island, they, they calculate a certain time to move forward, to get their business up and running, and it, and money is time. Many times, these investors decide to leave island because it's just taking way too long, or they've lost their full investment because of the wait time. I hope that answered the, uh, good Senator from Baragada's question with regards to their presence and the importance behind that. Thank you.
Senator Perez.
Yes, thank you. I just would like to proffer an amendment which hasn't been printed yet, so I'd like to request a brief recess.
All right, we'll take a, um, it's four-thirty-seven right now. We'll take a five-minute, hopefully five-minute recess for this amendment, five-minute recess. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
If you could refresh your floor amendment folders, colleagues.
The floor amendment should be online under Bill 38-36. It's labeled B38 SFP, line eight, page two, L8 P2. Please proceed, Senator Perez.
Okay. So the amendment is line eight, page two. It amounts the bill to read, "The director of a member agency that fails to submit a required report or position statement with a timeline stipulated herein or fails to report orally to the application review committee." And then the bill continues, shall pay the administrative fine of $250. So the thought behind this is that, so many of these regulatory agencies, such as the BSP and Guam PA, are usually the ones that failed to submit these reports. And I think these are really critical to get an understanding of the impacts to these, of these projects. The other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, a lot of these regulatory agencies, when I look at the staffing patterns, it's really critical. There's a critical shortage of staff. A lot of these employees have gone on to greener pastures for higher pay. And then the other thing is, you know, the amount, the workload has increased, I think, exponentially with a lot of these military buildup projects that are pretty complicated. They come with a lot of paperwork and review, and it's pretty intense work. And I think, you know, perhaps giving another alternative, so these meetings, the Guam Land Use Commission meetings tend to be pretty long, from what I could gather. And, you know, perhaps this could be a disincentive to, you know, not delay the reports, too. So I think there's just a lot of considerations. Of course, the fine still is in play, should they not be able to accomplish, fulfill their position statements. I think these position statements are critical. And it was also mentioned during the public hearing that a lot of what's given is not high-level, high-level position statements. It's more a regurgitation of statute, and it has less of, you know, less quality. And by requiring the director be present, they can then answer questions from, from the community. And it would be much more valuable to have their presence there. So there are, I think, those are some of the reasons I am proffering this amendment. Sisus Massey.
Senator, on the amendment, the clerks have pointed out that the word "or" should also be underlined. That's being added as well? All right. So on the amendment, it is on line 10, page two. It's going to add the words "or fails to report orally to the application review committee." Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I totally respect where the good authors of this amendment is coming from. But I think when we spoke during the break, the intention was to still maintain the $250 fine if the report is not done in a timely manner, which was the 73 days, working days. But I believe that this now falls to, if they don't, if they report to provide an oral to the, it doesn't fall suit. Because all the applications, there's already a documentation that each member of the application review called the Standard Operating Procedures GCMP number 600, that requires certain stipulations in the report that's required. So I understand what the good author is trying to do, but I have to respectfully reject, I mean, object to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. Thank you, Senator. On the amendment. Senator Perez, if I just may confirm, the amendment is to add the words "or fails to report orally to the application review committee." And then it says, dot, 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 meaning everything else in the current bill will remain intact.
Yes, that's correct. So the, should they not fulfill the written position statements within the timeline stipulated in the bill? I should, I think it should be "and" versus "or." So "and they do not," sorry.
"and" instead of "or." On the amendment to "and" instead of "or" on this floor amendment, is there any objection to that? If not, please proceed.
Wait, just one moment, please. The thought behind was that, should they not fulfill the written requirements, they're given one last chance to orally provide the written position statements. Otherwise, they'll face the fine. So I think that's an "or" then.
Okay. All right. On the amendment, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't know whether that would meet the test for what is necessary in as far as reports can be. As was stated by, you know, the author of the legislation, that there are operating procedures and there are necessities, there's paperwork that's necessary to be completed to be, for review. An oral report may leave out some of the, some of the information that's going to be necessary and can be misconstrued where it's to the detriment of the process. So I understand, you know, what the intent is from the author. However, I don't know whether that oral report can be accepted as, you know, that information necessary to make, to complete this review process. So I would have to object, ma'am, to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment. All right. Senator Perez, you may close on the amendment. And again, so the amendment now reads, "and fails to report orally to the application review committee." Senator Perez.
Yes. So, yeah, just call for the vote, I think.
Right. On the amendment, is there, there's been an objection, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand in support. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I think, again, it's important to have the application review committee technical, I do support the bill and the fact that it requires a timeline for these position statements. It's very critical
No.
to understand the impacts of, of these projects. And we just heard, you know, a previous bill, the fact that there's a lot of delays, and a lot of it has come from the application review committee, or at least the delay in submission of these, these position statements. So yes, I think it's critical to ensure that the process is, is not stalled. So, thank you.
On the bill. Senator Sinagustian, you are recognized. On the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 38 proposes a $250 fine for directors of the application review committee, or ARC members, who failed to provide very important reports and position statements on applications submitted to GLUC. My colleagues, we just finished, we just heard on Bill 14, and my colleagues, my primus from Baragada mentioned, how many times do we need to assist the agencies? Due to the restriction caused by the pandemic. This is an injustice to the many applications causing delay in moving our island forward. Bill 38 may just light the fire for these ARC members to do what is needed, to get these application properties vetted and run through the process. My colleagues, I stand in support of this bill, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. And what the author would include me as a co-sponsor, and maybe the question of them getting the job done be done. If it's only going to cost $250, then so be it. Maybe it will just speed up the process. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinagustian. On the bill. On the bill. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I believe I sent the amendments to the clerks. They should have received it. And basically, it's just an amendment to the bill on, hold this, page one, line 10. And it's a simple amendment, really. It's to change, change it back to, instead of working days, to put calendar days.
Can you cite the line and page number, Senator?
Yes. Line 10, page 1.
Line 10, page 1, to change the working days to calendar days. On the amendment. Senator Taitegui, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I thank my good colleague from GICO, no? Right? Okay. For the amendment. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
On the amendment, would anyone else like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, Senator Nelson, you may close. No, close. Is there any objection to the amendment to change? Is there any objection to the amendment to change working days to calendar days? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Nelson, you still have the floor.
Nothing further at this time, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator. Anyone else on the bill? On the bill? If not, then Senator Taitegui, you may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll just make this very short. Madam Speaker, Bill 30-36 is a difficult but necessary step toward improving the way things are done in the government of Guam because our people expect nothing less. I greatly appreciate the amendment made to the bill. And Madam Speaker, at this time, I would like to make a motion to add as co-sponsor in this order Senator Talina Nelson, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Joe Sinagusti, and Senator Sabina Paris as co-sponsors to the legislation, Madam Speaker. And if there's anyone else I'm missing, just let me know now. Forever hold your peace.
On the motion to add co-sponsors, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the motion to add co-sponsors, that passes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I motion to move Bill 38-36 as amended to the third reading file for voting file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, on the motion to place the Bill 38-36 to the third reading file, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion carries. We're, we are still on the second reading. Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we recess tomorrow until 14:00. So it'll also give us time to prepare for committee of the hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
2:00 P.M.
On the motion to recess until 2:00 P.M. tomorrow, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. We are recessed until 2:00 P.M. tomorrow.